Welcome. We'll call the meeting to order and I thank the audience for their patience. We had a meeting before and went a little longer than we had anticipated. So with that in mind, roll call please.
Yes, Mrs. Freed was not able to attend the meeting tonight and we still have a quorum.
Thank you. I do want to share that Mrs. Freed makes every attempt to be here. She is actually grading national AP exams in Kansas City. She does that annually and it just happened to fall at one of our meetings is here. So with that in mind, we're moving right into consent. Negative. What? Oh, thank you. No, it's not on here.[43.01][43.01](laughing) We'll go to the pledge of allegiance.[46.12][46.12](laughing) Thank you. Please Dan, Pam, feel free to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Pam. Moving right into consent, may I have a motion to approve consent?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next we have workshop topic, strategic planning. And for that, we'll turn to Dr. Wall.
It is not. Thank you.[126.74][126.74](laughing)
Where is this slide hiding today?
I wanted to start with this slide, strategic, in the strategic planning process and draw attention to where we are and what phase. And suggested mechanism to implement some of these recommendations. Not only that we heard through the past year, but some of the things we heard at Advanced Ed last year through accreditation. Many things we've heard through our stakeholders, either last year and this year through significant number of surveys that were completed and we appreciate all the stakeholders and that. And we've gone through phases one and two with the assistance of ECR as third party. Document the current state of reality and desired future position. Create a broad frame book, priorities for future informal strategic plans. And the board, you, thoughtfully consider the current mission statement and made suggested modification. Reaffirm the vision of Carmel Clay Schools, which is behind us on the wall. And develop guiding principles as we presented before. It's very exciting to have those guiding principles that become the non-negotiables. This is how we're going to do whatever we do and these guiding principles will lead that way. We're now into phase three. And phase three in the strategic planning process is develop an implementation plan. In that process, we've had administrative meetings and one culminating administrative goal-setting workshop where the entire district leadership team comprised of all administrators from ESC, building principals, assistant principals, directors and athletic directors, activity directors, met in a goal-setting opportunity, which was a very productive day of goal-setting and discussing. And I provided all that feedback to you from those groups that show some of the areas that are consistent with some of the things that were found through Advanced Ed and the strategic planning process. The key to that would be, how do we implement this? How do we take strategic planning into action? In the presentation, your mission statement and vision statement was reviewed with the district leadership team. It's important that that's where we start this discussion regarding anything we want to do as we implement the suggested strategic initiatives. The guiding principles, which I said to the ELT, I don't normally do this, but I'm reading these. Because it's powerful. These guiding principles were thoughtfully considered and analyzed and edited by you, the Board of Education. And it's very exciting to have these as your superintendent and as someone working for Carmel Clay Schools. Which focuses on phase three strategic goals. Operationalize the mission and vision into intentions that reflect the guiding principles of this school corporation. Now, this is much like the strategic goal-setting process that we had before, although slightly tweaked and I appreciate ECR suggesting we look at student learning, organizational environment and operations. It doesn't change the focus, the center of our decision-making is the students. The standards alignment and research information elliptical that goes around, the student-centered model, is what I refer to now as a filter for anything to get in, for us to even think about implementing. It must go through a strategic planning process, excuse me, a continuous improvement model, which we have for program evaluation and for anything we do so we don't become victims of ideas du jour. And all of us in education that have been in it for a while have felt it and seen that. This keeps us out of that knee-jerk cycle and keeps a focus on how we do what we do. We can still use our strategy map, which is exciting because it takes that student-centered piece right out of the center, pulls it out, and we still have that balanced approach looking at the well-being of our students, increasing that well-being and increasing student achievement. Clearly something that came out loud and clear through all of our stakeholder groups is continuing to look at the whole child. And in my mind's eye, this is the best visual I've had to say, what do you mean when you say the whole child? Well, it's the well-being and the student achievement. We value both. And the undergirding to all that is our vision. I think that's a really exceptional way to look at the things we're trying to do. These are the goals and objectives that you worked with ECR on as we look at student learning, as we look at the organizational environment, and as we look at operations. So you set the table and laid the mission, vision, guiding principles and strategic goal areas. So since then, question me, what have we been doing? The goal-setting process, as I said, we had a process with the district leadership team. I also utilize this with our, my student advisory committee, which I think is always important to have that connection back to why we do what we do and get their perspective. And it's not a matter of doing everything that anyone said, you know, has an idea to do. It's a matter of giving them that voice. This student-led group represent alumni from each middle school as well as gender balance in each grade level at the high school represented. I meet with them throughout the year, but the last meeting, I guided them through reflective goal-setting process. What are we doing well? A forward-thinking planning, what should we do more of? And then what are some things we should stop doing? And got some really keen insights from our student population, just like I did in the past, and share that information with you as we formulate potential actions going forward. The same process with district leadership team as I outlined previous. One thing I did add, and this is one of those things, you know, you kind of, you know, live and learn and call an audible. I'm going to try to follow Peyton Manning's role, the infamous audible caller that he is. And in what should we do more of, I challenged the administrators, how? How do we do it? And got some, I think, some really interesting suggestions. And I think that's going to be a component I add going forward with all the groups I take them through the goal-setting process. And frankly, it's one of those, just hit me as I was planning, let's probe this a little bit. Not only what should we do more of, but how should we do it? It was good. I really liked the purging theme that came out of the DLT. I don't know if you caught that.[589.16][589.16](laughing) I stepped testing, you know? Purge quickly through every group. Point being, the amount of time that we have that is devoted to standardized testing is just, yes, it's just incredible taxing on the time, on our teachers, on our technology, everything. Parents and most importantly, our kids at the end of the day, I'm sure are taxed beyond. So, the leadership team recognized that and is suggesting to purge that. So I think that's excellent feedback.
I would love to support that.
It's a beautiful suggestion. And as I've done the past, they spend a buck, it's a fictitious buck of sticker coins, but it allows, you know, them to send a message back to us, what should we really devote some of our resources to in the how and in the more of and the purge? And this is not only with what they know anecdotally, but just like you gave them all the supporting evidence to take a look at. What does this 55 pages of supporting evidence tell us as represented by all of our stakeholder groups? And their suggestions were instructional coaches in each building, technology integration development plan as a district, to embed SEL practices for all of our staff and students, implement project-based learning with community partners, have one learning management system, LMS for the district. That came loud and clear. Flexible scheduling expansion, examples, e-learning, conferences, finals, schedules, seniors, et cetera, which connects to some of the ongoing discussion that we monitor with high-performance school legislation. Concept of interventionists came up with the challenges of VNL, literacy, high ability, tech integration. The leadership team recognizes that's a tax on our teachers and recognize that's a tax on our buildings. And that is consistent with what Advanced Ed recognized with the emerging, changing demographic in Carmel Clay Schools. And it was also represented in the supporting evidence findings report from ECR. And look at changing student service coordinator and school counselor roles. That's something that we will be getting you as a board and myself, recommendations in the fall from the program evaluation committee that was comprised of teachers, administrators and social workers and counselors. We'll get that recommendation in the fall as it relates to K-12 counselor services. It's one thing we recognized a year ago that we needed to take a program evaluation look at K-12 counseling services. So, if you go back to the strategic goals and objectives that you put together with the discussion group with ECR, here are some suggested ways that we operationalize, implement, develop an action plan for 2015, 16 and beyond. These are the objectives and goals that you, that you've seen, that you've put your hands on using that same format. This is a draft action plan to be considered for 15, 16 and beyond. And what, as we've done in the past two years I've been here, some of these things are 15, 16 and beyond and will, I want to be more mindful to you on timelines as it relates to that. I think that's something that I tried to improve on this year, but really give more context to timelines on these events. Like program evaluation for counseling as along the way, we knew we weren't going to get that recommendation in the spring. They didn't get it, conclude their work in time. We're going to get that in the fall. Keep those timelines in front of us, but know that we're a work in progress. And when you're a work in progress, you don't just get everything done in one year and go, okay, what's next? Too many fits and starts. We want to have continuity. So with that said, using the student learning, organizational environment, operations as the strategic goal areas established by you, the board, and listening to the DLT and my administrative team with Amy and Roger and Ryan, really taking a look at, okay, how do we operationalize this? Under student learning, and I'm not going to read all those, but it's clear that we need to develop a technology integration plan as a district. The flexible scheduling piece is definitely something we heard in the middle school program evaluation. We are, and we heard that and we're implementing that next year. Good news. We also want to monitor Senate Bill 189. I agree. Right now, it continues to handcuff us, but we're going to continue to push that envelope and see if we can't do something about senior schedules, final schedules, something as we are a high-performing school, that we can really do some best practices for our kids and our teachers. Overwhelming message, we need to get to one LMS. For instruction, for communication, for our students, for our parents, for our teachers, for our professional development, for a lot of reasons. It's interesting, instructional coaches and our interventionists in each building to look at tech integration, VNL and high ability. It really appears that we have needs at the building based upon findings and listening to our stakeholders, where we should be providing more resources to our teachers in the classroom and the buildings in these areas. And as you saw with the practice last year, we took the instructional coaches and assigned them out to buildings. This moves that even further as we look at putting the resources as close as possible to the students and the closest possible places in the classroom with the teachers.
Is that something you're hoping to do sooner rather than to be on?
We are. Based upon the report that ECR gave all of us showing that these groups, student groups are underperforming, I think it's important for us to get those resources close to those students and to the teachers so they have more resources as sooner than later. We need to embed these SEL practices for staff and students. Another thing that is really exciting, as the individuals met in the guidance program evaluation, they talked about SEL practices. What are they? How do we embed them? This is not something that's just restricted to, oh, that's a counselor duty or a social work duty. This is all, all of us in this thing. And that's going to be part of their program evaluation recommendations too. I'm going to pause here a minute. One thing that really is, as a passion of mine, as you can see it, I'm working very diligently with some outside sources, trying to get a measure, a baseline measure of what this thing called SEL is. Absent a baseline measure, we won't know if we're growing or not. So getting an instrument there is vital in the metrics. And that'll come, I'll talk about that. I'll talk about our quality dashboard in a little bit, but I wanted to plant a seed Implement project-based learning with community partners, enhance college and career articulation efforts, and that's going to be done with, again, having resources in the building so they can do it. It was interesting, implement world language recommendations. We are implementing the world language recommendations next year from the program evaluation. It came through clear and it was one of those kind of aha moments for the DLT. You know, they were surprised, there was a lot more interest in world language in our stakeholders. But the good news is, we did the program evaluation and it said we need to change that delivery at middle school. And so those will be implemented next year and obviously monitored and measured as we look at how these suggested changes impact what we do. Now what you're going to see, and this is new, but I think it's important to note, some of these actions go in all three areas. And what we tried to do is put the ones that are common in all three first, and then if there was two, and then if it was isolated. Again, this is a draft and a work in progress, but I think it's actually very good that there's a merger across the goal areas. And as you can see, the one, two, three, top three go all the way across. Instructional coaches go in student learning and organizational environment. Embed SEL practices go in student learning and organizational environment. As well as implement project-based learning, enhance college and career articulation. And then we get into the ones that go into organizational environment and operations. New web platform for the district go in organizational environment and operation. Implement recommendations from counseling program go in organizational environment and, I think that's it. Communication handbook, yes, thank you. And implement recommendations for PD is in organizational environment. And over at operations, which is for operations. Maintain high-quality facilities. Program evaluation for pre-K through five, back to 2015, 16 and beyond, that's a biggie. We have no delusions that's a one-year process. Develop district dashboard to monitor student progress toward goals. I'll talk a little bit more about that. And as you have done as a board very effectively, stay engaged in the legislative process with your priorities. I really believe the work that you did as a board consistently, you know, sending it to our legislators, respectfully conversing, sending a common message is a very powerful and I think it made a difference. I really truly do. Continue that. And then the handbook, as Pam said, leads into the organization, implement the best practices in our communication handbook. That takes the process and says, okay, how do we take mission, vision, guiding principles and then take a look at the objectives and the goals? How do we get these into getting something done? And I really want to commend the DLT, the time I've been here the last two years, they have worked very effectively, me coming in with a suggested way to look at goals and how we do them, and getting things done. Now the exciting part is, we have, you, the board, have done all the, the work that you are intended to do with the mission, vision and guiding principles that set the direction for Carmel Clay Schools. And you had all those components, absent the process and then the guiding principles. But it's really exciting, all those pieces now flow off of each other. All within the evaluation cycle that we put in place last year, timing-wise. I'll bounce back to this because I want to obviously hear from you. The timeline we're looking at is to bring the strategic plan, because we're still looking at the draft strategic plan that you have worked on. Adopt the strategic plan and action plan for 15, 16 and beyond. And then another work in progress, this is not for the June 22nd board meeting, but I'm going to be working on a dashboard to present to you the board so we can monitor progress. Let me give you a couple of examples of how I see that. We have a dashboard now. It's very comprehensive. And Amy and I have talked about that. We want to laser this in on the areas that we're working on. And really keep, monitor on those areas to see how we're doing. For instance, one of the things that was a high mark in the stakeholder groups was having the best possible teachers in front of the students. One way to keep an eye on that is to monitor our teacher retention rate. Because it takes a lot of resources to recruit, to interview, to hire, to then mentor and all these things. And your retention rate is one way to measure that. That's an example of something that would be on the dashboard. Under operations, we want to continue to be mindful of how we do what we do with the tax rate we have. We have one of the lowest tax rates around and keeping that steady. That is a suggested way to look at the dashboard. Student learning, everything from how the kids did on the PISA to SAT to, we need this baseline SEL. Those are just some examples of things that I'm going to put in front of you to suggest we put on a dashboard and keep monitoring. We have baseline and then see how we grow over time. And some of that's already on the dashboard that we've had for a number of years here. It's just to really laser it in. So if I'm a parent, or if I'm a prospective parent, or if I'm an empty nester, or if I am a realtor, or if I am a business thinking about coming here, I want to look at this dashboard and go, what's Carmel Clay Schools all about? And be able to look at that dashboard and then it connects back to, we've got a mission, we have a vision, guiding principles, these are the implementation and goals. Okay, how are you doing? The dashboard should tell us how we're doing on all those areas. That's what I have to bring back to you yet as we look at continuing that measure. So we have a constant measure for us, for the community that relates directly back to our strategic plan and our goals that we want to get done. So that's something I'll be bringing back suggestions for you. It's part of the work that ECR said they would do with us too, develop a dashboard if you look on phase three. So, kind of one of those sign of things to come. I want to show you guys a video at the end of this that I showed the DLT that I really think encompasses this whole concept of the student that we have, where we look at, I believe, well, it looks at the strategy, the strategy map, sorry. Where we really want to say, what is this thing called, the student? And how do you know that you're increasing their well-being? And how do you know that this also matriculates into their student achievement going up? And we talked about this at DLT and this TED Talk really captures that, talking about what is grit. But I'll save that for the end, but I'll pause because I've talked a lot and I need to listen.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Wall. And I know the board has quite a few questions and we'll get started. Who would like to begin? And if you're not ready, I do have a question for you.
Okay, you start.
Okay.
I have one area that I need to put in here and I don't know why it didn't make it into her. Mentoring induction program.
Yes.
I don't know how that didn't make this draft. Did I just not say it?
Yeah.
Oh, here we go.
Because you were looking for.
I'm sorry. Implement recommendations from PD mentoring induction. So, I stand corrected. I couldn't find it.
No.
Thank you.
One of my questions goes to the district dashboard you were referencing. And some of the examples you gave aren't necessarily the specific actions that we have listed on our action plan. Are you intending at some point to incorporate these action items on the district dashboard?
Well, what I'm going to bring.
Are you hoping to?
The hope is that the dashboard tells you how we're doing in these areas of student learning, organizational environment and operations. So don't.
Okay, not specific, red, yellow, green on each of these action items?
Okay. The dashboard's not going to replace my regular updates on how we're doing on these actions.
Okay.
That are monthly updates to you, the board. It will not replace that. The dashboard is a component, much like the guiding principles, we haven't had it. I think it's an important thing we should have as we look at how we're doing as a district on these big strategic areas. And some of them are, like teacher retention is a measurement that indicates you're keeping your teachers here, you're doing what you're supposed to do. And a high retention rate is a positive reflection on the school corporation as reflected by all of our stakeholders wanting the best and brightest teachers in that classroom. That's an indicator.
Okay. Using teacher retention as an example, will there be any data to support or help us gauge what strong teacher retention looks like? If our retention is, say, 92 percent, which we might deem as fantastic, but yet the national average, which we know isn't, is 98 percent, are, is there going to be some type of a comparative value?
There'll be a.
So will our benchmark?
There'll be a benchmark for each of the dashboard items.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Pam, to piggyback on Leila's question, retention rate, are we going to consider the reasoning or the reasons why somebody is not being retained? Because if somebody has to move, they can't, they can't stay here and so they're leaving for a specific reason. Or, because most of the time, we just see that their reasoning is personal. And so are we going to ask questions specifically when they leave? And so are we going to ask questions specifically when they leave so that the retention, this retention rate is, is more scientific?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have a definition of what that is, retirements don't count in retention rate percentage. We'll quantify what that means.
Okay, because if somebody has to move, then they can't be, you know-
We'll qualify-
There's a reason why they're not here anymore.
Correct. I'm just using that as an example. That's okay.
Tricia, do you have some questions you'd like to proceed?
I do have a couple, actually. I just hit on one of them, so that's nice. The one area that the board hit on and discussed a lot about during our part of the process that I didn't really see on the spend-a-buck or the action plan, although it might be hidden there. So I just wonder if you could talk through the conversation that the district leadership team had around achievement gaps? And how that would be addressed? Because that was really key to the board, but then wasn't specifically laid out in the spend-a-buck or the action plan.
The underperforming groups?
Yes.
We talk about that with adding the resources to the building. But I think you draw a good distinction to this, Tricia, that we could make this a separate action under student learning as we talk about closing the achievement gap for underperforming groups. Does that capture that?
It, it really would to me, because that, we-
Do I have it?
That was really important to us, Ekra showed some really distinct evidence.
I agree with what you're saying, I mentally tried to fit it into interventionist, but I like that it'll be more physically present.
It does, it is the implied message in the interventionist piece on E and L and all that. But I think we can be more overt and talk about closing the achievement gap for underperforming groups.
Okay, thank you. My next question-
It marries really nicely with that topic.
And actually, there's several areas that would hit on it, you know, SEO. That's why I didn't know how the conversation went, really, on how it maybe was being addressed through several backdoors or something. My second question has to do with world language, that was another area that surveys brought up of interest. And as you brought up, middle school is reorganizing how they will present world language to the students next year. Are we looking further into that at a high school level, let's say, an interest survey? Or an elementary school level, and I've said this before, even partnering with community? Because at elementary level, it's either add to the school day for the most part. Or possibly partnering with community entities that could provide that for those that are interested. Was there any discussion on that with the district leadership team?
There was, I mean, and the world language recommendations were K-12. They weren't just for middle school, the program evaluations that, that were done. I mean, Amy, if I remember, that was a suggestion for K-12, not just for the, for the middle school. We happen to be able to implement them effectively with the middle school program evaluation. So it's, it's more than just implementing that component of world language for next year.
Okay.
It was a K-12 program evaluation. But it was very interesting, the DLT, and we're going to ask for this. Their questions, as you saw, departing questions on research was, tell us a little bit more about what you found, Ekra, on this world language thing, is there more we should be looking at? That's a takeaway question that they wanted more information on.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, exactly what that information meant, what are people trying to tell us here?
Right, and what, if anything else, we can do.
Okay, thank you, that was another area. And then, whoops. Handle it. And then, this is just in general, typically at our school board summer retreat, we look at the district goals and update them, tweak them, you know, see progress and where we're going to go. Through this whole strategic planning process, which has been very thorough, how does this feed into our summer retreat as far as what we will be doing there?
Well, if you remember last, we had no comparability, that was my first summer with you guys. And that was part of that process because we didn't have a strategic planning process, that was part of the discussion. So this is the phase three part that I think is really important, that is part of the strategic planning process because it's the final phase. And that takes care of this now. So for the retreat, I think that's to be determined what things we want to look at and how we want to develop that. I've got some ideas on that, but I don't see it being a goal setting like this because we, we've done all that work. You do, you do the work in the front end with Ekra, that's all, that's all been done.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, I wasn't asking for a specific agenda, but how that flows in there and what part, you know? What's the next part we can do? I know there's some realigning because of the-
It's still things we can reaffirm the communication, the evaluation cycle. Talk about what you want to do with legislative process, there's a lot of things to do. You've done all the, the hard work in strategic planning and now we get these suggested actions in front of you. So you did phases one and two, so to speak, and now we're trying to get to phase three.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you very much, Tricia, Pam?
Thank you, just have a couple of questions. I was noticing that professional development was not part of the spend-a-buck, or it's not really listed. But I've noticed in some of the information that we have from the DLT that professional development was one of the components that was emphasized. So are we going to be looking at that in-
Yeah, it's right there, yeah, implement recommendations from professional development, program evaluation, and absolutely.
Where, which one's that?
Under organizational environment.
Oh, okay, you're not talking about the spend-a-buck, okay.
Spend it-
Okay, I'm spending, no.
Yeah, just be, this is just a feedback. It doesn't mean we're going to do all these, as you can see.
Also, the high-performance school legislation. How are we going to be pursuing that so that we can do some of these things that we are talking about? That we would like to implement in the classroom, some of the changes that, that we want to see? Because I know we had talked to David Day at one point about how the legislation was going to affect our school system? And was there anything we can do at this point? So are we going, are we going to continue to pursue that?
Yes.
And how?
I requested a full, kind of like an administrative report on what SB 500 does for schools. I still haven't seen that, and if, as soon as I get that, I'll get it to you guys as well. What, I, my question after the legislative session to David and his people, what does this deregulate? Give me like a, operationalize this farming. Haven't seen that yet, so I want to look at that.
Okay.
We also want to see if there's something we can do about some of the scheduling flexibility that we were hoping was under the Senate Bill 189. But there really isn't that much, frankly, because they don't change what the definition of a day is. And they don't let you do half-days per se. Although some have introduced some of these half-day concepts. That's really not a friendly thing to our families to start taking half-days off, it's not inviting. So, to answer your question, I'd like to hear what has been deregulated? And what we're permitted to do with some flexibility? Maybe with our senior schedules, we can do something. But right now, it's, they gutted that thing pretty good when they finally passed it. There's not a lot of flexibility in there. Because the flexibility you want is, okay, minimize standardized tests, okay, you can't do that.
No.
Let's change the day, well, you can't do that. Let's take a few days off, well, we don't want to do that. So, I don't really know what they've done to allow high-performing schools to personalize or change the process. So I want to see what the deregulation thing did. Maybe that'll give us some insights, Pam.
Okay. Well, great, thanks Pam. Are there any other questions? Yes, Mike?
I don't have a question, but more of a request. If we could get just a list of who was on the district leadership team that was at that meeting? And maybe their positions, just so that, kind of his background that, you know, there was this principal, this assistant principal, these people? Just so that we can kind of, not necessarily put names to faces, but just have a idea of what the makeup of that group was.
Okay, it's all the administrators here, principals, APs, 60 administrators. You just want their names? I can do that, names and positions.
Thank you, are there other questions? Well, that's fantastic, thank you.
Wow. Thank you for setting the table so well. All the pieces in the right place, things moved, thank you.
So then what you are hoping to get from us, or what you're going to bring to us is further discussion in the meantime, and then on the 20th to bring forward, you will bring forward the plan for us to take action.
Strategic plan and action plan, two separate action items.
Two separate action items, okay. And I do want to share, I made my children watch this, and they had already seen it, their teachers-
Oh, they did.
Some of their teachers have provided them with this particular TED Talk, and I was pretty excited about that.
Well, that's-
Kudos to our teachers.
Great. Just to kind of get this context, it is about when we look at the wellbeing of our students and how that feeds off and student achievement, those things feed off each other. I, I don't know if you're a fan of TED Talks, but this really captures this concept of grit. It doesn't want to load, but huh? Any ideas? We've got no visual, no. Hey, did you see that? Why 86'd it? Any ideas, Jennifer, or should I just pull it off here?
When I was 27 years old, I left a very demanding job in management consulting for a job that was even more demanding, teaching. I went to teach seventh graders math in the New York City public schools. And like any teacher, I made quizzes and tests, I gave out homework assignments. When the work came back, I calculated grades. What struck me was that IQ was not the only difference between my best and my worst students. Some of my strongest performers did not have stratospheric IQ scores. Some of my smartest kids aren't doing so well. And that got me thinking. The kinds of things you need to learn in seventh grade math, sure, they're hard, ratios, decimals, the area of a parallelogram. But these concepts are not impossible. And I was firmly convinced that every one of my students could learn the material if they worked hard and long enough. After several more years of teaching, I came to the conclusion that what we need in education is a much better understanding of students and learning from a motivational perspective, from a psychological perspective. In education, the one thing we know how to measure best is IQ. But what if doing well in school and in life depends on much more than your ability to learn quickly and easily? So I left the classroom and I went to graduate school to become a psychologist. I started studying kids and adults in all kinds of super challenging settings. And in every study, my question was, who is successful here and why? My research team and I went to West Point Military Academy. We tried to predict which cadets would stay in military training and which would drop out. We went to the National Spelling Bee and tried to predict which children would advance farthest in competition. We studied rookie teachers working in really tough neighborhoods, asking which teachers are still going to be here in teaching by the end of the school year? And of those, who will be the most effective at improving learning outcomes for their students? We partnered with private companies, asking which of these salespeople is going to keep their jobs? And who's going to earn the most money? In all those very different contexts, one characteristic emerged as a significant predictor of success. And it wasn't social intelligence, it wasn't good looks, physical health, and it wasn't IQ. It was grit. Grit is passion and perseverance for very long-term goals. Grit is having stamina. Grit is sticking with your future, day in, day out, not just for the week, not just for the month, but for years. And working really hard to make that future a reality. Grit is living life like it's a marathon, not a sprint. A few years ago, I started studying grit in the Chicago Public Schools. I asked thousands of high school juniors to take grit questionnaires? And then waited around more than a year to see who would graduate. Turns out that grittier kids were significantly more likely to graduate, even when I matched them on every characteristic I could measure. Things like family income, standardized achievement test scores, even how safe kids felt when they were at school. So it's not just at West Point or the National Spelling Bee that grit matters. It's also in school, especially for kids at risk for dropping out. To me, the most shocking thing about grit is how little we know, how little science knows about building it. Every day, parents and teachers ask me, how do I build grit in kids? What do I do to teach kids a solid work ethic? How do I keep them motivated for the long run? The honest answer is, I don't know. What I do know is that talent doesn't make you gritty. Our data show very clearly that there are many talented individuals who simply do not follow through on their commitments. In fact, in our data, grit is usually unrelated or even inversely related to measures of talent. So far, the best idea I've heard about building grit in kids is something called growth mindset. This is an idea developed at Stanford University by Carol Dweck. And it is the belief that the ability to learn is not fixed, that it can change with your effort. Dr. Dweck has shown that when kids read and learn about the brain and how it changes and grows in response to challenge, they're much more likely to persevere when they fail because they don't believe that failure is a permanent condition. So growth mindset is a great idea for building grit. But we need more. And that's where I'm going to end my remarks, because that's where we are. That's the work that stands before us. We need to take our best ideas, our strongest intuitions, and we need to test them. We need to measure whether we've been successful, and we have to be willing to fail, to be wrong, to start over again with lessons learned. In other words, we need to be gritty about getting our kids grittier. Thank you.
So, if we can get a grit questionnaire, that might be one way to get a baseline. Because it really resonates with me as we look at the student matrix on what are the things we're looking for. It appears grit is one of the big things we are looking for. So, I thank you for your patience tonight and all the grit and determination you did when you put those defining principles forward, that was, that was gritty work there. Pardon me? Yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wall. And I would love to see how we as a district can teach grit and take that to NSBA. I'd love to teach that to my own children. So, does anybody have any comments they'd like to make this evening, board members? Wonderful, thank you very much for your time and energy, and we look forward to- Wonderful, thank you very much for your time and energy, and we look forward to continued success this summer. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.